Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning everyone and welcome to the October 18th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day is 1 Peter 4 verse 10. God has given each of us, each of you some special abilities. Be sure to use them to help each other, passing on to others God's many kinds of blessings. And our dog warden has our dog this morning.
Good morning, this is kennel 31. She's a female pit mix. She's about a year and a half old. We found her in Lorraine. She's in kennel number 31 and she's available on the 20th. We have 34 other dogs, so if you want a dog, we're the place to come. Thank you.
She wants to go home with you, Tony.
She got her eye on you, Tony.
Aww, how cute. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We have Joy Paget here, which is the Office of Outreach and Customer Service for Ohio EPA. Can you give us a question?
Hi, I was just wondering what my husband would say if I went home with a dog.
Better to beg for forgiveness.
Well, thank you for having me. I am Joy Paget and I always like to introduce myself as from the warm and fuzzy side of the EPA. And what I mean by that is that we are split into two parts, which a lot of people don't recognize that, that we are the regulatory side and the non-regulatory side. I do work on the non-regulatory side. I do believe that we need to have a regulatory side because in all my years of public service, no one has ever said to me, "I'm okay with dirty water," or "I'm okay with dirty air." But our current Director, Craig Butler, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to meet with him, he came on board in January of 14. And his history with the EPA is that he started as an intern in the Southeast Office when he was going to Ohio University. After graduation, he went to work for the Logan Office and eventually became the Chief of the Southeast Office. He then went on and became the Chief of the Central Office and had several other administrative positions within the EPA. When Governor Kasich was elected, he went to the Governor's Office to be the Advisor for Energy and the Environment. And then when this position came open, he was appointed to be the Director. And I only tell you that so that you know that he has had a very complete history with the EPA and he didn't really have that learning curve that a lot of Directors may have within their agency. Now, I was not there at the time, but I am told that he brought his administrative staff together and basically said, "Look, we, I know how the EPA operates, I know how we are designed, I'm good with all of it except one thing. We do not have an Office of Outreach and Customer Support." We don't have an office, which he called the front door to the EPA, where you would have people who are there to go out and assist communities, assist businesses. And I was there talking to Dawn just a minute ago and I am so pleased to hear that you do use our business services and that more and more people are reaching out for assistance from that. So I'm going to briefly go over our programs. If you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them today, but mostly I'm here to offer a tease so that if something comes along, you're going to say, "Oh yeah, I got a business card from Joy and I can reach back to her and she will help me network wherever it is I need to go to get the answers." So I promised Teresa that I would only take about 10 or 12 minutes and that's what I intend to do. If you would open the top brochure, the tri-fold, it is a brief summary of our division and our department. So our division is called DIFA and our Office of Outreach on the left-hand side is the office in which I work. There are only four of us that work in that department. We work across the state. When the Director called me to, because I was working elsewhere, called me to see if I would be interested in coming over to the EPA and helping him set up this office, we were chatting about his expectations and I said, "Well, how large would my region be?" He says, "Well, I've been thinking about that." He says, "I'm thinking 88 counties." And I'm thinking, "Oh, okay, I'm not allowed to cross the border, I guess." You are my 68th county that I have visited and what I have come to understand is that there are no cookie cutter counties. Everybody is structured a bit differently, everybody has assigned responsibilities differently and that's perfectly okay. There's nothing wrong with that at all, as long as you know what programs are available. I call this department, the Office of Outreach, the Education and Information Branch. So here are some of the things that we have available, other than coming out and making folks aware, I try to hit the Commissioners, the Economic Development Director and the Chamber, all on the same day. Because if I can share the information with you, then you are going to be more trusted to share it with the people in your county. It just doesn't work if I knock on the door of a business and I say, "Hey, I'm Joy from the EPA and I'm here to help you." This black smoke starts rolling out and it just doesn't work as well. But if people like Dawn are aware of the programs that we have and they can bring businesses to it, then that's how this is supposed to work. And now after about 18 months of doing this, we can see that people are starting to be comfortable enough to call, make the call and we can try to find the answers to their questions. If you ever wanted to have a panel of any sort, if you ever wanted to bring some of your smaller communities together to have a panel of experts talk about how to meet their water and wastewater needs, we can always provide people to you. And again, I'm referring to Dawn because we had a nice chat, but he said that last year you actually had OCAP come to one of the meetings and did a presentation. So that's always available. And then we also have a monthly, what we call a monthly update, that gives you information on any webinars that are being presented, any general information, and then a quarterly newsletter. So if you would like to have those sent, just give me your business card or send me an email, I'll add you to the list. And then if you find that it's not useful, you can unsubscribe later. But people have really come to rely on those webinars and that information that comes out monthly. In the middle panel, I am so impressed when I pulled up your statistics, which I think is on your desk. This is the interaction that Lorraine County has had with the EPA. There's not much I can say because you have participated in our water loans, in our wastewater loans. You're doing great with the recycling and litter prevention grants that we have. You've done the E3 awards. And I was mentioning to Commissioner Lundey before the meeting, the only thing I don't see on here, and it doesn't mean you're not participating, most counties participate at the county commissioner level, but that's what we call the HSTS program. It's the Home Sewage Treatment. It's a grant program for eligible families and it's for either the replacement or the renovation of septics that are malfunctioning. This is a very important issue, particularly when you get up here towards Lake Erie and you're dealing with all the habs. So I don't know if in your county, the Health Department may have applied for the money directly.
Yes, we did.
Okay, that's why it's not on here. Mostly, I'm always familiar with it coming to the county first and then going over to the Health Department.
It was about $300,000.
It has been $300,000. Because of funding, it's going to be dropped to $200,000, but the program is still there and I hope you're participating at the highest levels because, I mean, just if we can get some of that cleaned up. It's not going to fix the problem with Lake Erie, but it's going to contribute to fixing the problem. So the next handheld piece, a palm card that you have, is the Recycling and Litter Prevention Grants. And as I said, you guys are fully participating as a county, but I did want to draw to your attention on the backside, the last two. And the reason I wanted to draw your attention to it is because these are grants for private businesses. That is a very rare treat because normally there are no grants for private businesses. But this would be a business who's interested in a market development program, which means if they make plastic widgets and all these widgets are rolling off, they have all this waste stream that tend to go to the landfill. Well, if they can figure out how to make that waste stream a usable product, including it could be a raw material for another company, we will help and assist them in purchasing their equipment at the level of $250,000 a year for two years.
We've done that multiple times, Charlie.
You know what, I'm going to use you as my, "Go to Lorraine County, they know how to do this stuff." And then I think you also, when I looked at this, I think you have some, you had the scrap, you've used the scrap tire grant as well. But again, that's for private businesses and maybe somebody here in the audience might say, "Hey, I know somebody." So just wanted to draw your attention to that. That is the only grant that we have. Now, on our funding, as I said, you've already participated, you know how that works. I'm so pleased to see the level. You know about principal forgiveness, that if there is eligibility, you might be able to get your loan reduced from the principal amount. So I'm not going to say much more about that because it looks like you are experts in this. The last panel is the one that Dawn and I mostly talked about, is OCAP. And so many people are not aware of this program. It is for assistance to businesses. This is what the Director said. "I do not want any business to not get help from the EPA with their compliance issues." So we are spending a lot of time making sure that people are aware of this. Two most important things I think you need to know is that any assistance that you get from the EPA or a business gets from the EPA, it's free. And the other one that business is mostly concerned about, it's confidential. And it is so confidential to the point that it does not, public records requests do not apply to it. So at the EPA, all the records on the regulatory side are housed on one side, OCAP files are on the other, and they do not cross each other unless OCAP is working with a business who gives permission to talk to the regulatory side. And Dawn says he's experienced that, so you've got one of your own here who can give you confidence to go out and talk to other businesses. We also will assist in compliance issues. If a company gets that first notice of violation, often called an NOV, we can still assist them. When we can't assist them anymore is when they've had three, four, or five reminders from the EPA, they've ignored all of them. And then we get right into, you know, findings and orders. At that point, we're not able to help them on the non-regulatory side. So if you know, if anybody that gets an NOV, ask them to please address it as quickly as possible. Call me, I'll find the right people. The Director thinks this is such an important program that he actually, we have assigned to each of the five EPA districts. We have people who solely work on that. Here, because it's such a busy region, you actually have two people that that's their sole responsibility is to work with businesses and help them get back into compliance. So you have two palm cards here. The dark green one, I just went over and if you look on the back, it's got just simple summary of what I had to say. I will tell you that once a company starts using us, they often become what I call frequent flyers because they have that first positive experience and then they'll start calling. And I'll tell you, when I went to work for the EPA, I didn't, I mean, I feel pretty humble compared to all these masters and PhDs and 20-plus years of experience. There's not much that a company can put up to them as a challenge that they cannot help them through. The light blue one is a little bit different. This is a company who says, "We really would like to have our pollution control, we would like somebody to review it and help us figure out how to reduce our pollution." Again, free and confidential. EPA, Dawn, I don't know if you've ever used this program or not, but what it is, the EPA will send a team out to a company, will do a walkthrough with them, sit down, talk to them, you know, look at their processes and then actually go back to the shop and within 30 days, offer up a summary of what they saw. They will send a draft report of suggested practices that could be implemented. But here's the thing, the company is not required to follow any of those, but it can be something that they can set aside and work into their budget as, you know, as allowed. But it's strictly, strictly an assistance program with, you know, with nothing absolutely required from you. The next card is our newest program. We don't have a lot of material out, but we've had a lot of activity on this. I like to call it From Trash to Treasure. They decided to name it Ohio's Materials Marketplace. But this is where if you know of a company that, let's, I'm going to use pallets as an example, that has accumulated 200 pallets and they'd like, I'd like to get rid of these things, I can assure you, there's another company over here that would like to find some pallets at a more reasonable price. So what the EPA is doing, there's a website, you can put on what you would like to get rid of, you can put on what you would like to have. Companies can register for it, get on, and we've had some exchanges. Two of the most interesting exchanges I'm aware of is like 10,000 marbles. Somebody listed it and somebody wanted it, and the other one was bottle caps. I don't know how you end up with 20,000 bottle caps, but they did and somebody else wanted them. So that's how it works. We do not get involved in any of the pricing or any of the transportation costs. That's between the companies. The next one I put in is just FYI, please, 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 if you know anybody, any company that is going to do any demolition, any kind of major renovation that could involve asbestos, please make sure that they notify the EPA because they will be subject to fines without that notification.
I have a quick question on that.
Yes.
When I see it says, "A property owner was fined $15,000 for failing to complete an asbestos notification." You know, we have a land bank, so we're constantly, you know, doing the asbestos checks and, but I was in an NREC meeting on Friday and they had told me that if it's just one entity tearing down one house, they don't have to get the abatement check or the asbestos check on that. Is that true?
I would want to check that out to give you an absolutely correct answer, but that's not the way I understand it.
Okay. Everything that's getting torn down needs to be checked for asbestos?
I know that there are people that are, you know, changing their rooftops and they know that there's asbestos in it. Usually the company that will come and get the materials, they have to file that plan. So I will be glad to get an answer for you on that.
That was brought up and, this is saying a homeowner, so one property owner, like a residential property owner, if they were to tear, having to tear down their house, they would have to get.
And it's a written notification. It's basically to know, because you don't want to be taking materials to the landfill that would, yeah. But I will definitely get an answer for you.
Thank you.
And I know that you've participated in this program, it's the E3 program. It's a recognition program. It doesn't have to be a business. It can be the Commissioners' office suite, it can be this building, it can be a school, it can be anybody that is purposefully trying to improve the environmental footprint in Ohio. And as you can see here, there, on one side are the benefits of the program, on the backside are the criteria. The good news is, if you talk to a company and tell them about it and they go, "Oh, we don't want to do all that paperwork," tell them that the EPA will be glad to work with them to do, to do the paperwork. We will assist them one-on-one. And then to wrap this up, the last thing you have here is a resource guide. These are all the programs that are on the non-regulatory side of the EPA with a brief summary. And then we want to make it easy for you. In the bottom corner, either left hand or right hand, is the person responsible for that department, the direct phone number and the direct email. And if you don't want to contact any of them, I'm on page four. So I will be glad to route your questions to the correct folks. I think I went a little over, Teresa, I'm sorry. Any questions?
No, thank you though.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with you and I wanted to say Senator Paget.
Oh, that's all right. That's history.
So, but on the agricultural front, obviously we have concerns in this part of the state with the algae blooms that are taking place. I was just wondering through the OCAP, are you also working with the agricultural community to work on runoff issues and keep the lake healthy?
Absolutely. If an agricultural entity would call us and it's something that we can work with them on, a non-compliance thing with agriculture, as much of it is regulated by the Department of Agriculture. But we work with the Department of Agriculture, we work with the Department of Natural Resources very, very closely. So, I mean, we can always be an entry point and then we would guide them wherever they needed to go for their particular issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, do you believe there's a warm and fuzzy side to the EPA? I'm going to go upstairs and talk to those folks and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
EPA got a round of applause.
That never happens.
Welcome to Lorraine County.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Preparations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No travel, bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have potential hires at the Collection Center, also 911. I have three pending matters of litigation and I'm still want to talk about potential purchase of real estate. I can get to that last week, which is, so all three of those topics are allowable under Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussion, so to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Approve and read in the minutes of October 11.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Request the Budget Commission to approve the movement in inside millage from bond retirement to general fund. Current millage is 1.4 to general fund and 0.20 to bond fund. The new rates will be 1.3 to general fund and 0.30 to bond fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Vacate parts of State Street, Wabash Street, Railroad Street, and parts of alleys between Wabash and State Streets and the alley along the north side of Superior Subdivision, Illyria Township. Owner of said 200-plus parcels is Stormwater District. Meeting will be November 23rd and hearing will be on December 5th.
Excuse me, November 21st.
What did I say?
23rd.
I'm sorry. November 21st and hearing on December 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve change order number quarter, Moser Construction, the amount $26,017 for the historic courthouse renovation project. Change orders for various hardware, van coil units and boards.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, just a.
Courthouse.
The courthouse change order there, the $26,000.
A lot of it had to do with unobserved conditions. I'll give you an example, sometimes we remove paneling from the wall and to find out there was no drywall behind the paneling. We pulled up some flooring, had some rotted stringers. We ran into some plumbing problems after we got under some of the floors, some of the piping. It was in a condition that wasn't suitable to seal the flooring back up without making those repairs. Those are unobserved conditions. Given the cost of the project, our change orders have been significantly small. The largest ones were obviously the fire pump that we needed to install for the sprinkling system due to the new third floor. Originally, we're told that we had enough pressure and we would need the booster pumps and then they would check the pressure again in the springtime and the city of Illyria didn't have enough pressure. So we had to add that booster pump. I wasn't really pleased with that change order, but we knew the potential was there all along. But these other ones are small, they're going to continue until we get the interior renovation complete. There's still potential for unobserved conditions as we pull down more walls and put the office space in and add the additional build out on the third floor.
Oh, you're significant projects. I'd just like to have some comments on what happens as we have these small change orders and what's going on.
Right. The, any old historic building that's been renovated, you know, 10 times over 100 years, lots of things get sealed up. And so we're still, we're still working through it. As you can see, you know, the front of the building's going very nicely with all the stamped concrete and the memorials out there and we're going to rededicate all those and it's going to be really nice up front. I'm still waiting, so the roofing hasn't gotten here. They sealed it in and now we're at a standstill there and we're still waiting for the sandstone and the roofing materials. I had to figure out where our roof went.
Oh, for the extension?
Well, we saw they put the, they watertightened it, but then none of the material arrived to put over the, over the membrane that they put on the roof, so we're going to have to figure that one out. But these are not large and we monitor them and tracking them as we get them. Believe me, we check each and every one.
I got to tell you, I can see those guys right out my office window and it's tough work. I would not want to be up on that roof.
Not a real fan of height, so, yeah, me either.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Airport Entering Grant Contract with ODOT Office of Aviation for runway 725, payment marking for fiscal year '17, Ohio Airport Matching Grant Program, the amount of $48,730.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioners?
Yes.
95-5?
Yes, 95-5.
Okay, so, again, this goes back to, you know, the airport funds when people look at that, you get a lot of inquiries. It requires only a 5% match and this is ODOT money from the state, this is an FTA money, so this is additional dollars that the state's made available for work at the airport. So it's a small investment and we don't require any additional assistance from the general fund. The airport had the funds, so we were able to match this and for a considerably small amount, bring some nice dollars back to the county.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Job and family authorized agreement with Conus Inc. for annual maintenance and training subscription for the Conus system in the amount of $7,445.43. Authorized Director to execute on behalf of our prosecutors for most of all.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Court authority provide for the guarantee of the payment of principal and interest by Lorraine County on the issuance and sale of bonds by Lorraine County Court Authority for the benefit of Lorraine County Land Rationalization Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Solid waste, approve insurance policy with Colonial Insurance Company effective October 27, 2017 through October 27, 2018, for the HHW collection in the amount of $10,588.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Sanitary authorized payment to Huntington National Bank in the amount of $1,194,750 for the retirement of Pheasant Run sewer notes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
You want to go over that? We're retiring the notes because we got the low-interest loans for the residents out there. We had originally did short-term financing for that project through the county, and then we were able to secure lower-interest loans than we could borrow the money ourselves for. That money will be coming back to us when we start the project, but we had to either re-borrow the money because they were coming due, or pay them down now. I just felt it was prudent at this time to use our resources to pay those notes down rather than reissue them short-term. So we'll be drawing those monies as we go along and get this project completed, and that'll be coming back to the general fund. We saved the residents quite a bit of money by using programs similar to what you were presented with. We used the... I did a sketch.
OWDA.
Thank you. The OWDA funds this time, but we've used the Ohio EPA funds before on projects. Usually, those interest rates are a percent or percent and a half lower than we can borrow at. So when the projects have come up, we've accessed those funds pretty successfully, managed to bring back a better rate, and for a longer-term period, too. A lot of times, those rates can go 30 years.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Engineer approved and entered subdivision agreement with Columbia Northwest Properties LLC, Rich Baron Developer for Hunting Meadows Subdivision Number Three, off Snell Road, Columbia Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approved entering agreement GSI Inc. in the amount of $36,000 for ongoing engineering, inspection, materials, testing fees necessary to complete the construction of Hunting Meadows Subdivision off Snell Road, Columbia Township, and be paid from the MVGT account reimbursed by the subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Except on behalf of Ian Township Improvements of Barrington Park Subdivision Number Seven, plot of subdivision is recorded volume 103, page 95, and extends or establishes new township roads. One, Barrington Drive Township Road T 305 present terminus to New East terminus of 0.119 miles in lane, and Bexley Drive Township 324, Barrington Drive to North terminus of 0.030 mile lane.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
No additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anis?
Commissioners, I do have one matter pending litigation that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioner's report. As I mentioned, when Joy was here, I had my Natural Resource Assistance Council meeting on Friday. We had three projects that we had to rank. Two of the projects, one was Carlisle, Ox Bow, and Black River Protection Project, which was $660,000 plus. And then Rocky River/Black River Headwaters Restoration Initiative, which was $721,000 plus. 59 acres on the first one, and 268 acres on the second one, and that's what we normally do, is use the money to acquire the properties, to keep them from being developed, and keep them in their natural state in order to preserve wetlands and endangered species. So those were both approved and sent into the state, and also, we had a Montville Township, which was a park invasive species removal for $68,000. That property was already previously acquired through the NREC, and this was basically just for site improvements to the property. So we do a really good job over there, take a long time ranking all the projects and making sure they, you know, get sent on to the state for... to get financed, so...
So to my report, we have a lot going on this week.
Last Wednesday evening, I got an opportunity on David Pepper. The Ohio Democratic Party Chairman was in town. Very nice event at Corks in Amherst. Nice to see David up here. Also, an OACO Policy Committee met on Friday, going over our agenda items to be moved to our December meeting. Couple of the issues before us were our safety measures program, which is required under federal highway, how number of fatalities, rate of fatalities per 100 million vehicle miles traveled in our area. A large update that's got to be worked on and moved forward to our 2040 Plan, and then also revising and going over our Title VI Program, which is to comply with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and other nondiscrimination statutes. So just updating environmental justice discussions and long-term economic issues within our communities and those in need, so... But that's the end of my report.
I had the opportunity to attend the Lorraine County Labor Agency breakfast last week. The topic there was issue two. I think that's the one issue that I hear people saying they don't know how to vote on this issue. Definitely do your research. The pharmaceutical company, I think, has spent about $30 million in ads. I think every other commercial is one of their ads, but you certainly want to check it out. This is similar to an issue that I saw when I covered the legislature in West Virginia, where the legislature was hoping that they could pick up pharmaceutical prices for state agencies at the same rate as the Veterans Administration. It's my understanding the Veterans Administration is the only one that can really negotiate with pharmaceutical companies on their prices, and they get the lowest prices. But there's a lot of confusion about the facts there, so certainly make sure you research the issue. And I don't have the exact date, but I think the Lorraine County Democratic Party is going to host a information forum coming up later this month.
The 25th or 26th?
Yeah, 25th or 26th at the Community College. What was interesting was that the Labor Agency...
The 25th, yeah, 6:30 at the college.
Yeah, the 25th, at 6:30 at the college. But the Labor Agency was able to get those who were in favor of issue two to come out, but they had a very difficult time getting anyone to come out to vote. No, the people that are spending all the money on the no commercials, that's kind of interesting that they're not showing up. But so, just educate yourself on that issue, but I thought that was very important information. Empty Bowls is a group that puts together a fundraiser each year. It was held in Avon Lake, again, at the American Legion. They actually had about 22 different restaurants with different soups competing, and they also, at the end, you had a chance of turning your ticket, and some of the craps people had actually made bowls, different bowls, and painted them and shaped them in different ways, and you could take one of those when you left. But the Money Benefit Second Harvest Food Bank, I think last year they raised about $13,000. I don't know how much they raised this year, but I can tell you the soup was just amazing. The Lorraine County Historical Society held their yearly barbecue over at Jack Mathia. That's always very well-attended, and can't say enough about that group. Always enjoyed working with them and worked closely with them when I was in the legislature and getting funding for the Star House that eventually became the County History Museum. But just a great group of people there. Wasn't able to make the Lorraine Historical Society's Roaring Twenties Gala. I saw a lot of pictures online. It looks like a lot of folks were kicking up their heels Saturday night, and certainly had a lot of fun. So... And then, coming up this week, honored to have the opportunity to attend the 4-H Volunteers' Recognition Dinner that's going on tomorrow night down at the Fairgrounds, and will also be attending the Township Association meeting for the county. And that, interestingly enough, is being held at the Second Harvest Food Bank. And that completes my report.
Don't forget about the Burger Bash.
The Burger Bash is starting.
Starting Friday.
That's right, the 20th.
Has anybody had their cupcake yet? I've made two of them, Sweet Dreams and Kudrowskis.
No, have not. You can go on Facebook and look at the Visit Lorraine County if you want to know about the Burger Bash or the Cupcake Crawl, so...
And then Tuesdays are IAC meeting, Board Response.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning?
Oh, I thought Peter was coming.
She's leaving? Or she's coming up? She's coming up.
I don't know.
She's coming up.
That's okay. Take your time.
Just state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Harkins. My address is 2405 East 29th Street in Lorraine, and I'm here because of the strike at the ODJFS office. I am a client there, and our medical has been cut off for October. September was our re-up month. I did everything I was supposed to do, and somehow, we've fallen through the cracks. I have a family of eight. My husband is a cancer survivor. He has to go to the doctor every three months. I have many chronic illnesses, and I have children with special needs, and we are suffering. And the first week, things got funky. I tried to call, and I called and called and called, but the phone didn't work. So I let that go. I thought, "Well, okay, things will work out." It's been a month. Things have not worked out. Next week, I called the pharmacy. I have $900 in prescriptions that I cannot buy, and I will end up in the hospital if things don't get worked out. And then, I was looking on Facebook, and I keep seeing these posts and these articles from the Chronicle and the Journal where we're being told that things are a little behind, but they're running smoothly. No, they're not. We are suffering. My family in particular. And on the child support side, something has gone awry with my child support as well from my first husband. He is paying it. It is being taken. It is being shown as being taken. It is not being dispersed, and I cannot figure out why. I can't get an answer. And so, in addition to not having medical care, now I am out money on top of it. And I have six kids to feed. I can go hungry. My husband can go hungry. I don't know what I'm going to do. And I'm begging you to do what you can, to come to an agreement so that this agency can get back to work, because things cannot possibly be running smoothly with... I think the last number I read was 170 people on strike. That's just absurd, or even a little behind, slight delays. Are you kidding? I'm going to cry, because... And I can't be the only person who has to think, "Well, you know, I personally don't work. I have six kids. I stay home." But I know many people, they work, they have jobs, they have kids. They can't go spend two hours in line to get to the counter to have someone tell me, "Well, I'll email your caseworker." Who's not there? So I don't know what to do, and I'm simply begging you to do something. Thank you.
After the meeting... Tony, can you get... I'm going to have Tony get your phone number, your name and phone number, and see if he can help, okay? Thank you. Anybody else?
Business address 420485. I work in the Adult Protective Service Unit. I won't go into that. I originally was going to read proverb 31, but I think you can read that for yourself. But I do want to leave you with this thought. Do not withhold good from those to whom it is due. It's rightful recipients when it's in your power to do so.
I work at 420485 North Ridge Road, and I had to work for four weeks now on strike for something that I left better employment for because I couldn't afford the medical for my children. So I come here. Now, I just recently got divorced, so this carve-out doesn't really affect me, but that doesn't mean I'm going to be that way the rest of my life. And to carve out the one, the key components of a family plan makes no sense. And, you know, it's just, a lot of people like myself, being out of work this long is going to affect us drastically. We're not going to qualify for any help. We're going to be behind the eight ball from that point on out until we find a way to carve, you know, to catch up. And it's just, you guys make a lot more money than us. Could you survive on what we make?
Elder Mark Taylor, 180, College Park Drive, N7, Elyria, Ohio.